I would like to lead this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this law with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Adam? Do we want the approval minute move it or?
Second.
The approval of second? Needs to be approved. We move on to, do we need to add anything to the agenda?
Just one thing for supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Get that under their resolution.
And then there's an application for permit where both those under the contributions for fishing pond. Under new business?
Under new business.
And then can we talk about moving the meeting next month in November? From the first to like second or third?
For opening purposes?
Uh, no, I'm gonna be gone. I'll just run the show on duty.
Sure, yeah.
It's looking.
We can put that on the new business also. I need to be on for radio purchases. We put that right under the shoot Kelnowski, if you would please. We got four things added to the agenda. Move on.
I need to approve the agenda as amended.
All right. We got the agenda. Approve, move to approve to add Nelson under for radios, application of the Ralph permit, resolution for supporting and talk about me. Again?
Yeah.
Yep. Shoot Kelnowski or you?
Okay, uh, I am Joe Kelnowski, if you're the folks on the way out. Come to talk to you folks, do you want me to stand over here or am I good right now?
You're good, okay.
Um, so our initial cost for CAD system and all those who, you know, if you're all familiar with the CAD program and what's, what's going on with that, or do I want to do expanding on that at all? We're good on that?
I think we're good.
Okay, um, so the initial cost for that was thirty-three thousand or three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. The overall cost for the CAD program. A hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars was the time service costs that were expected. Uh, so that we can get the program initiated and started. It takes about a year for the whole program to actually start. And then, uh, we're expecting that twenty twenty-four, uh, will be when the program actually starts and CAD is initiated and, uh, all our startup costs will have to be. But we have to come up with this hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. So, uh, with speaking to some of the city commissioners, Commissioner Robbins from the city, uh, came to the, to city council and asked if we would pay for a large portion of that. The city agreed to, uh, pay for three quarters of the amount, uh, of the hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, and that would leave, uh, a total of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, uh, that we are asking Ramsey County to come up with. It's, uh, a quarter of the cost. Uh, the city would pick up three quarters of the cost and Ramsey County would pick up a quarter of it.
And the seventy-four thousand?
Seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, we're, we initially talked about doing half and half, but when we looked at the numbers, the initial costs, uh, the city would be picking up almost half right away. So it was kind of like not productive saying, well, we're gonna pick up half and you guys pick up the other half and we're really only paying our own. So, uh, this way the city kind of agreed saying, no, we need to pick up more. So we ended up agreeing, the city commission agreed to paying that amount, a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, so we're asking, um, the county if they would approve the, uh, the, the cost of seventy-four thousand, four thirty-four.
City's taking up about what?
Uh, city's picking up a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three forty-six.
And that's out of that hundred and ninety-five though?
Yeah, and that was total a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven eighty. The reason why we're kind of pushing this issue, uh, more now than we probably were, uh, is that, uh, this cost will change at the first year. So it's been kind of sitting around for about six, seven, eight months. Uh, and so we've talked with the vendor, they indicated that yes, it's not a permanent quote. Uh, and that it will change at the first year, so we're like, well, we probably should get on it.
Yep.
And, uh, and so we are. And so with that, uh, and it would've been advantageous for us to pick that amount up as opposed to us to go to all these other agencies and all these, every entity that listed on the stuff that I gave you and asking them for that small amount. Uh, it just wouldn't work. And so, uh, that's what we're asking for.
And I think this is something that I've been discussing at the LEC for quite some time. Um, different vendors have come in and given us demonstrations on it. And this is the one that we decided that would work best for our dispatch and our agencies all agreed on it. And it looks really, really nice.
Yes, I agree with you.
Now.
Like Jeff said, we've talked about it at the law enforcement center quite a lot in a number of months. Yeah, there's a direct need and it was vendor related and the rest of the county, the other three counties are all favorable. And I know that, so, I mean, they're not affected like the city or us, but yeah, I'm sure they're in favor.
I think it'd be just affected on the annual subscription cost. Everybody's gonna have a subscription cost.
Correct, the yearly subscription.
And I think I put that in there for your total amount, it's really not that huge. I think it's seventeen thousand dollars or close to eighteen. Uh, the cities will be about thirty-eight thousand. Uh, they're willing to swallow that too. Uh, I'd have to just go to each county and ask them what they want to do. If they don't want to do it, then that would just reduce the cost of the total amount that much, so.
No, they're all in favor of it, sure.
Joe, I have, I do have a question.
Sure.
So this one ninety-five, seven eighty, we take three quarter of that, it comes to one forty-six, eight thirty-five.
Okay, let me see where to come up with that. Initial costs, I don't know where to come up with that, to be true. This is my numbers, this is my administrator's numbers.
And the only reason I'm asking is because if we're, if they're going off the one ninety-five, seven eighty?
Yeah, that's what we'd be going off of.
So then the three quarter cost would be one forty-six, eight thirty-five, and the other quarter cost would be forty-eight, nine forty-five. Sure, I just want to make sure that we're getting numbers correct.
Yeah, and he said initial costs, um, and, uh, you know, what I can do is I can always go back up to him and ask him that question too.
I just want to make sure we have the numbers right.
Well, yeah, I mean, because it's not really, I didn't put up the numbers, he just gave it to me. So, um, yeah, I mean, I have no problem with, uh, asking him to review those numbers, so. I mean, if you guys want to approve that, that quarter, uh, whatever that is.
Seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent?
Yeah, and approve, approve the twenty-five percent, then we can see if they'll pick up the rest.
How would we approve that?
One second.
We have a motion to the city take care of three quarters of one ninety-five, seven eighty, and we would take a quarter of one ninety-five, seven eighty.
You had that number on that, sir?
Forty-eight, nine, forty-five.
Forty-eight?
Nine, forty-five.
Okay.
You, you got the number you want me to read?
Nope.
So with the order, we have to, to roll call or vote? Is that a roll call or anything?
Yeah.
Which I think, well, so.
I mean, you're committing your commitment to that, so.
Roll call, yeah. Two roll calls early?
Okay, Fred?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Decept?
Aye.
Lifon?
Aye.
And Volk?
Aye.
Put, put that as proof for three quarters from the city, quarter from a county. You have the numbers correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. All right.
Steve?
I just, I need a motion for approval to order, uh, radios for the Siren twenty twenty. Um, I need to order four more for next year, which I have included in my budget to pay for them. But I just want to get them ordered so we can get them here by next year. And it's over the twenty-five hundred, so it'll be about fifty thousand. And then that four that I ordered should complete my entire fleet, so we should be done with it and be ready to go.
Move to a hundred percent.
Hopefully a hundred percent, uh, done with that twenty-four thousand, or that entire project on the market.
Move to approve?
Second.
The first and the second to approve to part of the radios on this year's budget or next year's budget, yes.
You don't have to have them in the moment, just you?
It's about twenty, it's, it's about, this is over like six thousand dollars a radio, so it's like twenty-four thousand dollars for a mobile and a portable. And we would buy them together, so we get the mobile and the portable. So I do actually total four, eight radios here coming up here when I order them. Uh, they're about five to six thousand a piece.
So the total amount, you think it's gonna be?
The two, the two I ordered this year was like just under twenty-five thousand for the four radios I ordered. So it's about twelve-five per portable and mobile. It's off the state bid, it's the state bid price that we're getting, so it's pretty much locked in.
And unfortunately, they're taking months and months to get those orders completed.
Actually, it's been pretty good here, but we had to wait last year, but we're getting them in four, six, yeah, sometimes three to four months. So it's, I just want to make sure we get them so we're ready to go when we're.
Still a long time.
Well, it's still a long time, it is, so.
So with that, we got first and the second, do we have to vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Roll call it up? No, we're not personally. Do you want to vote? Raise your hands or?
All there is head.
All say, or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve to order radios.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Did you have anything else? You guys have anything else? We don't have anything else, you guys have anything else for Steve? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, right in the air.
Hmm?
Steve, right in the air.
Well, that's right, that's important.
The OEC, the NAM.
Yeah, we have all the recourse on, uh, inspection from the safety goal, but I think that.
Oh, sure.
Hey, since it's not five forty-five, we'll move on to unfinished business. Starting off with purple fund recommendations. Anybody have anything for that? I guess I had talked to Adam, you know, he's online today, he's about, he's putting this on for him until Adam can physically be here. Okay? You guys are all good with that? Adam, you good with that? With that, I think we'll just put that on, hold and move on.
I, um, sorry, I was muted.
Okay, thanks, Adam. The next thing, DSO travel. I guess I called, uh, Lakota and Minnaquik and got them both on board. And the only thing they work with is as long as he puts in monthly a quarter, so, but they were all with him. And the only thing they ask is to make sure when he goes to Lakota, that they're not getting charged for something if he's not there. And I did, and I got, I did talk to Brakes to make sure that he checks in with, uh, the officials for that, so that. They want zero, not that. He was cool with that. You got to do anyone in there, right?
No.
So we're wanting this to start January?
Yep, and this would start January, so it would start on the next year, not this year, next year. And I talked to Brakes about it, he was cool with that. April. Okay, with it being five forty-five, we'll do the hearing on our praises.
Anybody?
Anybody? Anybody?
Nobody.
With no one here, I think we can, what do we have to do with that?
So you just, you just have to have a hearing that essentially told?
Okay, so with that, basically that's our hearing, what we showed, so.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve those values as praise. Now, so we need that, say approve the values on the crazy, uh, tag.
So we have a motion to approve the values and a second to move on with the values of this.
And we do have, maybe we have, hang on, it's coming, no, three, three, four. Four, four, what's the one I have on? Yeah. So. Hopefully, definitely. It'll be less.
All in favor, right?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next item on new business. I guess Kevin's not here tonight, so I can go over and read the Ramsey County Highway Department. October twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two, basically updates on projects such as paving patches. As you can see, you guys have paper for yours. Jason talked, tried to save and they looked over the paving patches we want it done. And we're gonna keep us in mind if they get a break between projects. And then also Strada is planning on doing the patches for us this month. And that's where we're at on such as those pro, or those paved patches. And he says he started to put together some specs on a new payload or a compact loader, skid steer, just to make aware of the case. We see it out in the paper and not sure if we want to make a motion on this. Do we need to make a motion? That he put that in the paper? Do we remember, Jeff, we have to do that? Basically, all he's doing is putting it in the paper to get.
It's already in there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he's just getting bids.
He's just getting bids, it's not like he's.
Yeah.
And then the next item, he said he has, uh, three machines that need to be all adjusted. The quote was twenty-two eighty to get all of them done. And it's below the twenty-five hundred dollar threshold, but he just wanted to know, let us be aware of that. And they're scheduled to be done first part of November.
Would I need a motion on that?
We're not paying the bill, is he just?
Yeah.
He's just giving, just letting us know.
Yeah, and we're just on November days. Okay.
With that, move on for approval of baiting.
I have the motion to move with that, Dave. And now we're just taking off the structure part of it.
Tag it, we got a person, a motion for first and a second. Okay, everybody say aye.
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 Okay, next thing on the agenda would be the contribution for the fishing pond.
Yes.
Who does?
Those of you that don't know me, I'm Larry Wildell. I was here at the March meeting and I kind of pitched this urban fishing pond project that, uh, we were thinking of and that a lot of people in the community thought was a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, at that time, we had a lot of momentum going forward and getting this pond going. And momentum kind of slowed up quite a bit because we were waiting for that permit to be approved, to dig a pond out to nine feet. It's currently, when we checked the last minute, was four and a half feet. So that got approved kind of in the middle of the construction season, which is kind of put that on hold in the city engineering department. They, uh, threw up the engineering plans and they had this thing done. And it was put out on bids and Terry rolled through the, the bids and the funding part of that. And, um, I think the community is still very, very excited about getting this done. Um, a lot of people have approached me in the streets and told me it's a good project and, uh, thank a lot of people on some of these boards that approved some of the funding for this and some of these grants. And they said it was a slam dunk, it was easy to make that decision. So with that, Terry, she's all ears as far as the funding and the bids, that we're opened up today and some of the grants and.
Okay.
On the board.
Terry, one question.
Yes.
Do the game and fish are planning on?
Stocking it annually.
Annual, because of the kill, right?
Yes, yes, that and the fact that it might get fished out. Now, initially, when we were on these Google leads or these teams calls, they were kind of stocking with fish from Wood Lake, but they had that whale to kill there, so I don't know if they're gonna do white bass or whatever they're gonna do, but they, they did agree to stock that annually, that's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Whatever they do, don't put non-native species in their place.
I just hope and assume that they know what they're doing.
I would assume that as well, but sometimes they get these crazy ideas in their head that they're gonna have some exotic pen fish in there and all of a sudden it makes it sway to.
To make a light, yep, yeah.
So.
Terry?
Okay, um, so you guys got a list of the funding sources. Apologies why some of this is handwriting because I did this yesterday and I didn't know the bid price for the contractor. Uh, and I did, and I found out today that the community fund is only putting in seventy-five hundred. And I didn't have access to get back to my computer today because my new guy that takes my money started days, so he took my computer. I couldn't get back in, so I had to do some handwriting.
You never use it before.
So I, as you can see, we got a lot of different, uh, people or groups that have put into this, which I think is great. And we got the under ten people, I got a grant from ARP and, uh, Hills of Carey Foundation. Larry, uh, Larry got, uh, some money through the sportsmen, Hills of Carey Sportsman, Lake Region Anglers and the Lake Region Community Fund. So you see what we've committed or got committed, assuming the county puts fifteen thousand. The city did commit last night to the fifteen thousand, so that's why it says penny, but they, that they approved it last night. So with that, if the county puts in, we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Well, the fishing here is twenty-six four, we have a confirmed price in that, in that price for the contractor day we opened. There was two bids today, from Galen was a hundred and eleven thousand, two eighty-five, Strada was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So it's quite a difference in the bid, but, uh, we did accept the bids today, assuming Mike Gramska, the engineer, uh, you know, approved, uh, looked into the bids and approved them, and he did approve them this afternoon. So we do plan on moving forward and we're just, uh, you know, we, we know there might be some more cons with the side of our part. Though I just put an estimate there, so we may be a little bit short of the funding, but we're damn close and we think there, uh, Galen's, Galen's ready to go to work, uh, here in the next couple of weeks and get it out to, and be stocked next year, but. So, I mean, we're just asking that, you know, the county would, would get partnered in this and put in fifteen dollars. And I think everyone's put in a nice share to this and it's gonna, you know, it's a nice community project.
Did we put that fifteen on the book as a motion?
Um, no.
Oh, was, was support?
It was back in March of twenty-two when they came, um, and, um.
We were about to basically see what, how.
Yeah. They were present to request commitment of funds from the commission to go forward.
At that time, we, we had no idea what costs were involved. I mean, the bid just came in this afternoon, so.
I'll go ahead and add in the motion.
Second.
The motion we have is to approve fifteen thousand to help with, uh, fishing pond project, because that's our part. We're gonna need a roll call.
Um, where do you want it?
Yeah, we, we gotta take this out of.
So we want to just take another of our, the first COVID?
First, our COVID money?
Sure.
We get to, we're gonna figure that out, or we just gonna take it out of there?
No, I just need to know.
So good that with that, Adam, taking it out of that first COVID money?
That, yeah, the first COVID money makes the most sense to me, we, we have plenty of funds there, so.
Okay.
What, can I ask a quick question? I didn't catch, what was the Galen bid?
One eleven.
No, yeah, Galen, Galen was one eleven and Strada was one seventy-five or something.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I think we just need to roll call.
Yeah, let's check. We will call. Fred?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Decept?
Aye.
Lifon?
Aye.
And Volk?
Aye.
Okay.
That's cool. I see you don't have use activities on here, so.
We haven't accounted that yet.
I did think about it, yes.
And the funds to, who would pay?
This is part, the hardcore's gonna pay all the bills and whatever.
Okay, okay.
That is no much of a.
What's that?
That is no much of a, use activities.
Oh, okay.
Okay, though, kids can use this, right?
Oh, yeah, it's more designed for kids and seniors, it's like more for, you know, for people that clearly can't get.
A great activity for them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Terry.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you for your time and, you know.
I, this was, this one, one more thing. Um, on that, uh, other building, you know, that we're looking at, the Leaver Building, you know, we're still moving forward that. I know we're, uh, you, we took that request in word, but we have a pretty good design now and some costs that I will get to you guys before your next meeting, just so you can kind of see. It's obviously a lot more higher than we thought, just like everything nowadays. I mean, I did the new price to put everything in there that we want. We thought it was gonna be two million, it's about three point one million. So, but I'll get you guys so that you have a design that shows the, uh, cost, uh, so there's a nice layouts of it, whatever. I'll, I'll get that to you within the next, before your next meeting.
Okay.
So that just so you have something to look at, a better picture of what it looks like. Because we're meeting with the city about the same time, uh, on that, on their funds too, when you're, it's like the first meeting in, in November, so.
Great, thanks, Terry.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys on this topic.
Well, Commissioner Volk, I think the last time I was here in March, we had talked maybe about getting a roundtable meeting together, some of the parties involved in this gaming fish, Ramsey County, city, hardcore, sportsmen, that kind of thing. Would you still be interested in a ten year meetings like that if we put it all together? Especially if you come up a little short here and put some minds together.
Absolutely, I can't see where it would hurt.
Yeah, so keep you posted, you can go up with that.
Thankfully.
Goodbye. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll do application for raffle permit. Move it through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is resolution for supporting operating green light for veterans. Hey, do you have something?
Uh, Mr. Reed, it's what happened?
So basically, this is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Resident of Ramsey County have great respect administration, not most gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in their armed forces. Whereas contributions and sacrifices, the men, women who serve in their armed forces have been vital in maintaining freedoms and the made life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Ramsey County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religion groups, civil services, and by function of the county veteran service officer in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to several civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four dash seventy-seven percent, forty-four to seventy-seven percent of the service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and activity. Service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And the Ramsey County Commission appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel. Ways specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved designation as a green light for veterans. County Ramsey County Commission hereby declares from October eighteen through Veterans Day November eleventh, twenty twenty-two, a time to salute honorable service and sacrifice for all our men and women, any uniformed transition from active service. Therefore, be further resolved that in the upturn of the Operation Green Light, Ramsey County encourages citizens of the patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring. Ramsey County encourages citizens of patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made a miserable sacrifice to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Basically, this is just asking us to.
Yep. Very good program, yeah, I appreciate the support. Appreciate our veterans.
I'd make that, uh, motion to adopt that resolution of support.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, first and a second to adopt the resolution for supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. All in favor of this saying aye?
Aye. Thanks, Jeff, for bringing that up.
No, I think it's a, a, a great program and there's a lot of, and then next year we can be a little more involved in the, because they have a whole toolbox of, um, merchandise, companies can purchase and display around their buildings, so.
I actually got a light bulb in the mail. From the National Association of Counties to display, so I'm trying to figure out where I'm gonna.
Is that outside, like in the?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, it's just like a standard light, so I don't know.
Under that canopy, I suppose those bulbs are hard to change. You know, if you.
I don't know if it'll fit.
Yeah, you can just put one in there and.
Yeah.
Left it on.
Yeah, I'll ask Roger.
Well, ask Roger.
Or it can be inside, like right in the.
Yeah.
Um, entrance, I don't know, you're still okay though.
And Blaine, you don't know if the DFW would have any additional green lights, you know, to get to purchase?
I could ask. Services out of camp?
There's maybe two of those entryways, you know, we could do it on the inside entryway, like. You know, we, we go on.
Yeah. We never have green.
I could ask.
Uh, maybe I'll send them on.
Totally, yeah.
Oh, ask.
Well, I, I think, you know, as the National Association of Counties has further encouraged this, um, for the past couple of years, I think more and more retailers are getting those items, so.
Cool, thank you. Don't ask, I can't.
Thank you.
I couldn't, I imagine he would have something, because what is there for? And maybe even brace those. I'll, I'll run that.
Yeah, we should run that, that's the DFW. They could have a green light.
And encourage our citizens to do it.
They're probably on it.
They're probably on it.
I'll talk to him before he's on the, on the board, so. Okay, moving on to the next item. Uh, talked about moving the next meeting from the first to the second or the third from November. Correct? That'll be Wednesday, it's a morning meeting either way.
Correct.
Now, do you have a preference of what day? Neither day works for me. Did you move to what day?
It doesn't matter to me, I'm coming home on the Tuesday. I'm going down to watch the hockey and.
Adam, you got a preference?
I would prefer the third, 'cause I think I have, uh, Forward Devil's Lake possibly on the second. Both won't be on that, but I would prefer the Thursday.
If he has other commitments, I'd say we do with that, or do you do with that candy?
Does it work for you?
Yep, I'll make it work.
Okay.
But whatever works for Candy, I will that.
After the election. No, it'll, it'll be fast. It'll be fast. It'll give me time to close books and, or we could do that before you go.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, 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 okay, done with that, okay. Nope, the night shall be good.
Okay.
I'd go ahead and make that motion, I would change our first meeting in November to Thursday, the third, at eight AM.
Second.
Got the motion and a second to have a meeting the third of November, eight AM. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Other than that, visitors and delegations, right?
Um, yes.
Visitors and delegation, anybody?
Anything going on, Terry?
Um, I'm just here to answer questions for you guys if you have any questions. Um, we have our state brag coming up on Saturday and we have about eight hundred and twenty-five tickets out. And everybody was supposed to turn in their tickets today, so Cindy will have a count for me tomorrow. But it sounds like we're gonna have sixty-five degree weather on Saturday, so it should be a good day for kids' activities and we've got some barrel racers already signed up for the event and.
And if they haven't bought tickets, they can buy tickets right out, out of the event, correct?
Right.
Right.
Barrel racers, sir?
We start at one o'clock with exhibitions, the actual runs that are timed will start at two. We should be done by four and.
State's here at five.
Yep, and the kids' games will go from one until five. We have, um, Mark Olson has donated his bounce house to be set up out there. And Lindsay Overmeyer from Extension is gonna be in charge of some kids' games. It should be a fun day for, for everybody.
Sounds like a good deal. I'm gonna have to wear a parka, right?
It's gonna be sixty-five, so you might sweat with the parka.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so eight hundred tickets out there, you have, you know, a month that has come back already?
Well, I talked to Cindy just before I came to this meeting and she said she has a pile on her desk. I'm not sure what that means, but.
Well, that's good, though. Hopefully get great support for that.
And the, um, road fire department is, has got a new grill and they volunteered to do the, the cooking, so. We're getting those people involved too.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Adam. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a little gripe about how many roads are when we mowed, got to mow those ditches. Some places, there's a ridge about like that or more, up to six inches. And there's gravel in that, while you try to mow that grass, I've had to replace a couple, two feet on my mower, guards and stuff running in the grass to mow the road sites. And then if there's water on the road, the maintainer comes along and he just swipes that gravel into the ditch and you can't hay it.
We can bring that to Kevin's attention and.
I brought it to his attention Monday morning. But also, there's a weed about that far from my mailbox in the road. In the last two years, he failed to even cut that off. So some days it goes by, about all he moves is the pebbles. So it's kind of hard to take. I've mowed the roadside, I think I've mowed about nine miles now, so.
Do we get those, uh, hay racks for the front, uh, the main hangers, are they using those, Brian?
That don't do any good, Jeff, it's got, that, that edge has got to be put into the road. You're gonna take a little, it's gotta take a little grass and put that on, so there's no place for the water delay.
So basically, basically, we need to farm the roads in the spring.
Well, when they, we, Stephen's township did that a few years ago and when the maintainer come, he didn't do, he didn't do his job of bringing that stuff up onto the road.
We need to pull more of it back on it.
It's gotta be, that stuff's gotta be put in and that grass will, when everybody's got it mowed, when it comes spring, that stuff can be put into the road and it won't, I remember they used to do it. I, I guess that was, that's my complaint, I guess I've been around here a long time and mowed a lot of road sides, but it's getting tougher every year when you gotta run into that. And the guys that's doing it with their rotary mowers, they, they, they aren't getting it down. You know, they just cut the top off and.
Would, did Kevin have any answers for you or just listen?
Didn't have nothing to say.
Okay.
Well, as a commissioner, I think we can talk to Kevin for the people and get an answer and go from there.
I mean, it, it's the same way on the county road. You travel that road, yeah, down south there, there's a, there's a edge along there, on the top of the hill down there by Rusty.
That's a lot wider than any gouge road.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, county's word a lot better than it's been in the past, so. Yeah, but they still took a lot of gravel off and throwed it in the ditch on the top of that hill down the bank there. Gravel's expensive, so it's, it's hard to see sloughing it off into the ditch when it could be mixed it. Then those wheels would work if they had that.
Right.
Had that stuff, brought that stuff into the road.
So it's definitely something that needs to be done after we farm it. Like they, they call it farming, when that disc cuts that and then they pull it back onto the road, that's when it needs to be brought back onto the road.
Yes.
And normally that's done in the spring. And I believe we have talked to Kevin about that, about thinking about doing some more roads? 'Cause I believe they did do some. But Kevin also said that the townships have to ask for it. If they don't ask for it, they don't farm.
We had, we were a long way from a normal spring this year.
Right.
A long way. I mean, everything was wet and floppy and then we're gonna turn in June. A lot of roads couldn't get covered, so kind of had to deal with what we had.
And I think.
It was awful wet during the month of May and that's when we shouldn't be farming the roads, so.
And we had a mess, we had a mess with the roads going underwater.
We have to work out some water.
Well, we let the portorial commissioners handle that. We'll let Adam and Dr. Kevin and see if we can.
Fair, fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to bring it to the attention because it's kind of provocative to have to think you have to run your mower through the gravel to get your roadside to mow.
Oh, we certainly appreciate that, that, you know, otherwise we don't hear about it. If we don't hear about it, then everything's fine.
That's why a lot of it come, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, with that.
Um.
Any other?
Chamber, uh, annual celebration of community and business tomorrow at the Elks, uh, socials at four thirty. Awards and presentations start at five thirty. And as Chamber members, uh, we're all invited, so.
What time do you say that's started?
Four thirty is the social and five thirty is the. And it's heavier order, it's not a sit-down dinner or anything like that, it's heavier. Being this year. A little bit then, different than an annual awards banquet per se and no keynote speaker or anything like that. It's more of a, and like the invitations have a celebration of community and business.
Any other helpful? Heard none, we got a motion to.
Second.